All right. Going to get started. I'll call to order, first, we're going to be doing a very, very short meeting, so don't think you've been in the wrong place. We are going to be discussing a resolution to authorize assurances of energy conservation revenue bonds, which I see one smiling face about that. And we're going to do approval of our finance corporation minutes from our previous meeting, so that'll just take a few minutes, and then we will end that meeting and call the meeting you're probably here for to order. So I call this meeting to order of the Board of Education Finance Corporation's special meeting.
Great, and I'd like to introduce Lincoln Diner. See, you can come on up to the podium, Lincoln. This is a great meeting for us because it's signaling progress in a project that we're going to do. Lincoln is here from Ross Sinclair Associates, and he works with us on the sale of bonds. And so this is a meeting that is separate from the regular meeting so that we can initiate a project which will take place this summer around the renovation of the, primarily the middle school HVAC system, so that we can get that 20-plus-year system operational, but we'll also be doing a variety of other projects such as domestic hot water heater and some boilers and LED lighting throughout the district. So this is part of that process, and Lincoln is here just to talk about the sale of bonds for that project.
Just a brief overview. The good news, I know we've turned our TVs on the last several months, we've seen interest rates have been shooting up. They've finally leveled off, and so based on our projections, you're going to be able to finance half of the debt service paid from energy savings. And sort of our target is to have energy savings left over as a cushion. And so if we were to sell bonds today, you would end up with approximately $56,000 a year annually of excess savings to sort of pad things. And so we hope to sell your bonds approximately March 8th, and then it would be a three-week closing thereafter where we would have funds in your local bank. Is there questions about the actual, any part of the bond issuance process or the energy savings contract I can hardly touch on?
Yeah, this was a project that we've spoken about, and so this is the next step for financing it a bit, so just go ahead.
All right, well, as you may have guessed, Lincoln was the one who was smiling, and we will move on to this action item. So I need to read that before I call for a motion. A resolution to the Board of Directors of the Fort Thomas Independent School District Finance Corporation relating to and providing for the assurances of $5,530,000 principal amount, which may be increased or decreased by the amount of $555,000...
Thousand.
Yeah, that's what it was. Sorry, I lost you. Of energy conservation revenue bond, Series 2023, in accordance with Sections 162.120 through 162.300 and 162.385 of the Kentucky Revised Statutes to Provide Funds for School Building Purposes, providing and determining the duty of said corporation in connection with the operation of the school property, the creation of funds sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on said revenue bonds as and when they mature, the creation of adequate maintenance and insurance funds, and authorizing the execution of a lease and other instruments with respect to such foreboding property with the Board of Education of Fort Thomas Independent School District. Do I hear a motion?
Sure.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, so the resolution has been passed. Oh, I need to ask for a vote. That would be the next step. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Now officially has been passed. The second order of business in this meeting is approval of minutes from our Finance Corporation meeting on January 9th. Don't think, let me see that. So do I hear a motion to approve the Finance Corporation minutes from January 9th?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, if that's everything, which I think it is, we will call an end to the Finance Corporation meeting. All right, so let's call to order the meeting you're here for.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, thank you, Lincoln. Congratulations.
Julie.
Yes, ma'am.
Give me a second, I'm trying to...
Okay, sure. Gotcha. Okay. You just tell me when.
Okay, good.
All right. Call to order the Fort Thomas Independent Schools Board of Education regular meeting, and we will start this meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we get to do some recognition, which is probably our favorite part. So we'll share first some board bravos and updates, and I guess that will get us going. Thank you to our counselors. We just came off of National Counselor Week, so they do so much in terms of preventative work for our students in the areas of mental health and academic advising, so thank you to them. Also, just a shout out to we the people team for advancing on to nationals, and also great performance, I know, by the mock trial team, I believe in their regional tournament, advancing on to state, so. Bravo. Yeah, others.
Kind of segue off that in line with appreciating our counselors, I'd like to do a board bravo to Rachel Caswell at Woodville Elementary for recording a really nice parenting seminar, bringing Renee Maxton to talk to us about kids and big emotions, and I think that kind of preserves some parent mental health by being able to talk about some of our parenting challenges, so kudos to her for doing that.
I know that the Fort Thomas Education Foundation dance is March 4th, and I believe it's sold out or nearly sold out, so, you know, that's a good thing there. Any other way, you might want to support it. I think there's online raffles and all that good stuff.
So a couple things from the last month. I had a chance to see Cinderella at the middle school. They did another awesome production. That was great, and they, I know the kids involved in the high school that were with that have already started doing their next production, Twenty Todd, which I believe is the third weekend of March, so, you know, have tickets for that. And then shortly after that, I got to do a cool event that I had not been to. I got to attend a wrestling match at Highlands High School. So my friend Ronald Kingston is here, which is not, he wasn't playing out there, but I had wanted to talk about this. So if you haven't been to one of our wrestling matches, I would highly recommend it. It is, I don't know what I was expecting, but it is a surreal event, and, you know, maybe even a little bit of sensory overload, but there's three matches going on at the same time. But our kids, I mean, and kids that you know that are out on the floor wrestling, and, you know, you don't see them maybe as wrestlers, and they're just, you know, showing a different part of themselves than maybe you know. And to give you an example of that, so I saw Cinderella, and then I happened to see Cinderella out wrestling. So it was very cool. We have, we have a really fun team. There are a lot of girls on that team, so the program just started a couple years ago. So if you haven't had a chance to do that, do that. And then I did want to recognize, because they did have regionals, I believe it's this past weekend. So we actually have a region five winner in Rodland Pacey. So it's Highlands' first-ever region winner in wrestling, so very cool for that. And then we also had Will Gallagher plays sports, so I believe those two move on to the next round. And then we've got, what's the term for the, all the other kids are?
They're alternates. We have four different alternates, so.
So we got alternates as well. So great, great job by that program, it's very cool. I was glad I got a chance to go see that, so congrats to all of them.
And also, I remember, I need to share, I was able to attend the Booster Bash, which took place a couple weeks ago, and just want to give a shout out to that organization. I saw Coach Kingston there and other coaches. That group raised over $13,000 for athletics at Highlands, which is great. Thank you to those individuals, Nicole Utz, Carol Dixon, Megan Abner, Kathy Roller, and Amy Golden, who was the cake chairperson. There was a first-time event for cake off, so really cool. And the winner of the cake off decided to give their winnings as a donation to tennis, so good for tennis.
Yeah, I think the only other thing, that all the winter sports are entering their playoff rounds, so go out and support them if you can. I think there's a senior night in basketball for the boys this weekend.
Yeah, I think it's on Friday.
For the girls, is that this week as well?
Yeah, I think so. I think it's on Thursday, maybe, the girls.
Okay, next week, okay. So go out and support our winter sports teams. That's all, yeah.
Just a couple other real quick ones.
Yes, please.
Best of luck to our swim team. We will be, we have several that are competing this weekend in the state meet. Also, we have the middle school and high school forensics team will be competing in the state competition, the 24th and 25th, I believe. Go out and celebrate the kindergarten circus. The annual kindergarten circus is coming here at Moier on the 23rd. Want to recognize 32 eighth graders who were recognized by the Scholastic Writing Award, which is, which is an impressive feat when they're competing with kids across grade levels, so fantastic job out there. Our elementary academic team was rocking and rolling this past weekend, so congratulations to those of you who are moving forward there. Good luck to our sophomores and juniors who will take the ACT on March 7th at school. Make sure you get a good night's sleep. And I'd like to finish the bravos. When you look at this room, and you look around, and we talked about the Booster Bash, and we talked about the upcoming foundation dance, and you think about this town, and you see all the people here.
And the school.
It's a really special, special place that we get the honor to be in, and tonight's a great example of that. So I want to thank our city partners, SNEA Fort Thomas, who have been working really hard to make sure that we could utilize this space. They have a couple finishing touches that they still want to put on, so we'll still have, we'll be able to project to multiple screens in future months, and cameras will be built in, and some additional finishing touches, but we thought it would be really great to be here tonight and go, you know, just out of our way to say how thankful we are for the partnership we have here. We'll probably try to work something up more, maybe we get a little closer, I feel like. But that partnership's very much valued.
All right, so continuing on, we want to talk about some excellence and give out some Tradition of Excellence award. So we're going to start with our first individual this evening, and that is Ms. Emma Hood, and the person who nominated her will speak to her excellence and the tradition.
Somebody else is going to have to...
I'm going to do it.
Okay, all right. That's what I was...
Got it.
Okay, don't mess with the stand-in chair, okay? And that person will be Ms. Erica Volpin.
Well, okay, so Mr. Beach earlier mentioned the success of the wrestling team, and you'll notice that there is, you know, their coach and some teammates are here to help to recognize Emma Hood, who was nominated by Kelly Booth, you can see over here. And this, I just, I'm going to read some of her words in the nomination because she said that she wasn't sure she could get through it because it's just really touching. So Emma is an eighth grader at Highlands Middle School, and she has demonstrated all of the qualities of courageous leader and empathetic collaborator, and is really, you know, the portrait of what our graduate should be. She is an outstanding wrestler, she's a great teammate, and recently at the Raider Rumble Tournament, Emma competed against a wrestler with special needs, and she showed such outstanding care for this amazing young man that she wrestled in the way that she wrestled him. And so Mrs. Booth says that she could have easily gotten a pin as soon as the whistle blew, or even refused to wrestle with this young man. But instead, instead, she made a choice that was filled with compassion and a desire to include him, and, you know, include him in a sport that he absolutely loves. And she says she witnessed this young lady carefully watch the clock, watch the score, making sure that he got the time to wrestle a full three rounds, and she created a really special moment for her opponent and his teammates, and a memory that certainly this young man and his team will have forever. So Emma, I think, where are you?
I think we can come up to.
I know, I'm...
So we want to present Emma with the Tradition of Excellence award.
And just to let you know, Emma, this is in recognition of demonstrating the portrait of a graduate competency, a courageous leader, and empathetic collaborator, and that is the highest, those kind of actions or lives, things we could hope for our students. So thank you for demonstrating that and making this booth cross.
You're just being a really good human.
Yes, yeah.
Emma, I think they were trying to get a picture of you, too.
Oh, yeah, and we got to get it done if you don't get a picture. Oh, yeah. That's my camera.
Right now.
So you hold it, there you go.
Woo! Go, Emma!
You may cheer the supporter, that's even better. Our next individual we're going to talk about is Ms. Booth, who is a teacher at Johnson, and her nominator will come forward, Ms. Emma Warren. Tell us about Ms. Booth's amazing Tradition of Excellence.
Can I go off script and say one thing real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that I always tell my son that, to me, a great athlete is not just someone who has, like, great results and wins, it's the kind of person they are. So that says a lot about you, and that's pretty darn amazing, so. Now I'll put my official glasses on, okay? As the mother, sorry, I'm long as I said, a mother of a current fifth grader at Johnson, I've been familiar with Mrs. Booth's name for a few years. She's always received glowing reviews from students and parents, and clearly had a passion for her mission as a teacher, especially in her core teaching subject of science. At a school as impressive as Johnson in a district that is known to be one of the top in the state, it's sometimes challenging to stand out as extraordinary. After getting to know Mrs. Booth as my child's teacher last year, and now as his Eco Warriors mentor, I can truly say that she deserves recognition for going above and beyond. The FTIS mission statement states that the district provides engaging and challenging learning experiences which foster creativity, curiosity, and innovation while inspiring all students to pursue lifelong learning and become productive members of the global community. In her teaching, Mrs. Booth is well-known for her hands-on projects that get the students dug in while also making sure they understand critical concepts. I still store a solar oven in our upstairs closet that was a science project in fourth grade where the entire class celebrated their successful build by using the sun to heat their oven and make an outdoor smore with their classmates. Actually, happy to be here tonight. A few months ago, this board was able to hear from the inaugural class of Johnson Eco Warriors about some of the work they're doing in environmental citizenship. Last year, after some students came to Mrs. Booth about their desire to do more in this area, she took on the responsibility of starting the club, and they immediately hit the ground running. Even with only part of the school year remaining, they were able to give recycling bins in each classroom, along with working to be stewards of the outdoor classroom. In order to marry the enthusiasm of these students to be productive members of the global community with scientific learning objectives and solution-oriented learning, Mrs. Booth participated in curriculum training focused on waste management, recycling, composting, and waste reduction offered last year by the Kentucky Association of Environmental Education. She was the only teacher who participated, yet clearly made an, I don't mean in the district, I mean, like, in, of all the teachers in Northern Kentucky they invited.
They weren't jumping on that?
They were not jumping on that. They should have been. I'm sure it was super cool. Yet clearly made an impression while there as she impressed those who put on the training with her initiative and her desire to facilitate learning that her students requested she help cultivate. Fast forward to this school year, and Mrs. Booth, along with her amazing co-sponsor of the club, Mrs. Alyssa Brown, worked with the expanded club to start a recycling program in the JES cafeteria. Not just any recycling program, but one where recycling basic plastic bottles and milk cartons wasn't enough. The cafeteria has nine different recycling stations. Once food waste and silverware are removed, most students' trays now have very little landfill waste left. At Johnson, we're very proud of the work of our Eco Warriors and all of our students and all the amazing staff that have contributed to making this program's success. But without Mrs. Booth's tireless efforts and time, we can't imagine it would have ever happened. The calls and connections that had to be made, the extra resources that had to be requested, the grants that had to be written, the school-wide assembly planned to train on the process, so many tasks required extra time and effort from her, yet she juggled them all with a laser focus on the goal of helping her students keep learning and engaging in the passion of environmental science. She will try to tell you, yet ready for it, because I'm sure it's coming, all the credit belongs with the students, the dedicated staff, or the helpful parents, volunteers, and community partners. Yes, those were all contributors, yet her work and commitment was critical and unparalleled. The description of what qualifies for a Tradition of Excellence award nominee reads that it should be someone who demonstrates why our learning community is truly rich in tradition and focused on the future. Jillian Booth, through her many years of teaching and mentoring students, has shown how she embodies the tradition of FTIS, giving back to the community that supports it, while continuing to work to help each student she touches be a courageous leader, an empathetic collaborator, a global communicator, a curious and critical thinker, and a creative problem solver. She continues to inspire our students to be bold, be involved, and do their best work in and out of the classroom as they grow and cultivate a better future academically and civically for themselves, their classmates, and their community.
Awesome. So that being said, very well, there's also a video, I believe, that has some of those students in the program you can see, but we would like to award Ms. Booth with this Tradition of Excellence award and recognition of her dedication to creating courageous leaders by providing exceptional experiences and opportunities for students, so. So I think we took some credit for that.
Ms. Liana, can we have a picture with you?
Yeah, let's get a picture. All right, I think we have one last group, and it is a large and talented group to recognize, and Ms. Rowland, if you could lead us in that recognition, tell us about the KMEA All-State Choir, and let us know who's performing there.
Okay, so we have a tradition year that allows our students from grades five to 12 to audition with a Kentucky All-State Choir band and orchestra. And the fifth and sixth grade choir is called the Kentucky Children's Chorus, and this year we had one student from Johnson, four from Moier, and six from the middle school be selected to be in the KCC choir. So they had to learn a song prior to the audition, and then we, music teachers, record their audition and send it in, and having been a judge, we listened to, not of this group, but I've done it before, hundreds of auditions. So for them to be selected, the hundred entries is quite an honor. And so let me, I'll read the names of just who our KCC members are. From Johnson was Hannah Berry, and then Moier, we have Amelia Ucrisher, Beatrice Landon, Parker Shidman, and Edie Twiggus. From HMS, Alice Hare, Maggie Hare, of Me Johnny, Grace Maring, Brielle Stanford, and William Twiggus. So those are our KCC members for this year. And then the junior high choir is for seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. So from the middle school, we had two seventh graders and one eighth grader selected, and three from the high school, from the ninth grade, that were selected for that. So Lee Labach is in the eighth grade, Lucy Schell and Kit Valentine are from our seventh grade, and then the ninth graders, is, I think it went off the top, right? Rafe Pinkston, Nora Shanwell, and Addie Litner, they're in the Kentucky Junior High Choir. And there was actually two choirs that they were a part of depending on where their voices were matched. And then the high school, they have to do a live audition. It's for 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, and...
You audition in groups of four?
So they have to show up, and they have a soprano to tenor piece ensemble to audition, and there's a sight reading component. So it goes from recording from fifth to eighth grade, or fifth to ninth grade, to a live audition. So for our students who have been selected, the scores are very high, so the cutoff standard is pretty tremendous in this area. So from the high school this year, we had Katie Bushley, Connor DeFeeleres, Silvy Martin, Grace Shulley, and Evan Stewart. And Jamison Zoller was also selected, but he had conflict because he was in a performance, a theater performance, so, but he also made the cut. Okay, so those are all the choir students. And then we have one symphony orchestra student, which is only available for high school students. That's Kate and Shorter for the third year in a row was selected, and then a jazz ensemble from our band was Logan Holbrook, and both of those students are not here because they're doing a street and musical rehearsal because they're in the orchestra for the show. So when you're talented, you're...
When you're talented, you're in demand.
Yes, so just to compliment these students, they had to learn the music prior, rehearse it on their own and somewhat with their teachers, but they did a lot of the labor. Then they were selected, they had to learn all the songs prior to showing up down there, rehearse for two days straight, including going into the evening, and then perform at the concert, which was like Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, depending on what the performances were. And a lot of the parents go along and get their kids to and from the rehearsals and feed them, so it takes a village, it truly does. So on behalf of all of the music teachers, I want to compliment all of those students. We're very proud of the representation they did for Fort Thomas Schools this year.
Yeah. Yeah. And... Yeah. And... Why, this may be panoramic.
I want to do this angle.
There you go.
I should sing a song or something.
I know. What did you guys think about the concert? Was that a pretty cool experience? I would imagine, literally and figuratively, it was a big stage. So, pretty cool to get to do that, and you guys were in Gouple? Mm-hmm. All right. Yeah? I know, I do.
You may have to introduce yourselves.
Yes, yes, why not? Because the people who really came to see may be out there, so we could turn around, and if we could, we'll start on this end over here with our young man, and if you would just say your name and you can say your school, that would be great.
My name is William Twiggus, and I'm from Highlands Middle School.
My name is Me Johnny, and I'm from Highlands Middle School.
My name is Lucy Schell, and I'm from Highlands Middle School.
My name is Kit Vanacron, I'm from Highlands Middle School.
My name is Amelia Brenner, and I'm from Larry Elementary.
My name is Brielle Stanford, and I'm from Highlands Middle School.
My name is Edie Twiggus, and I'm from Larry Elementary.
My name is Future Slade, and I'm from Larry Elementary.
My name is Maggie Hare, and I'm from Highlands Middle School.
My name is Alice Hare, and I'm also from Highlands Middle School.
I'm Katie Bushley, I'm from Highlands High School.
My name's Evan Stewart, I'm from Highlands High School.
My name is Lee Labach, and I'm from Highlands Middle School.
I'm Nora Shanwell, and I'm from Highlands High School.
I'm Silvy Martin, and I also go to Highlands. High School.
Well, congratulations to you guys. We're going to give Ms. Rowland some certificates to give to your teachers, to give to you for this wonderful achievement, so thank you so much for representing us. And next up, we continue to hear about wonderful students with our Johnson showcase of Project Droplet. And I think we will hear from the teachers who are leading this, the fifth grade group, Ms. Cawthon, Ms. Hert, Ms. Brown, and some of these student leaders who have been a part of it. So maybe Ms. DeGees might go to start.
No, they're doing it.
Oh, it's, we don't need, we don't need...
They got this.
Cool. Well, we are excited to hear all about it.
Good evening. Today, we are here to present Johnson, um, and the fifth grade more, Project Droplet. People who presented in front of us are Aiden...
You can give away her...
Drew, Reagan, me, Blake, Maggie, Lily, and Hannah. This is our global award, Thirst. Thirst is a book about the water crisis. Throughout the book, families struggle to get clean water, hence the title of the book. Also, some big events that took place in the book where the poor women are getting extremely sick and affected the water crisis. To many, the main character of the book, the water crisis, in general is catastrophic. Once your mother fell in the city, many had to cover her chores and her mother's. This includes, I mean, a maid for a very strict and rich family. Another thing that took a toll was that her or a family member always had to travel to go and get water. This water was hard to get though. Water only came out during certain times of day. Sometimes, only a little came out, and the lines were crazy long. All of this explains how Mumbai was affected by the water crisis. The pictures on the slide show the living conditions in parts of Mumbai, as well as the process for collecting their water. So the two pictures that are not showing the title of the book are showing the living conditions of Mumbai, which were quite crucial and harsh.
Okay, so after finishing Thirst, we began a book called Long Walk to Water. This is a story that goes back and forth between the two main characters, Salva and Naya. Salva's story is in the past, and Naya's story is in the present. Salva is forced to flee his country, is in a civil war. He walks to refugee camps. In the present day, Naya walks every day to find water for her family. During the dry season, Naya's, Naya's family has to move to the pond to dig for water every day. At the end of the story, Salva and Naya cross paths when Salva arrives as an adult to help install a water well in Naya's village. This story is based on a real-life story of Salva. He has now started an organization that raises money and installs water wells in South Sudan. So, I messed up, that's his thirst, but it's, that's actually a long walk to water. That map-ish thing, that is South Sudan, where the story takes place. And that guy at the top, that is Salva, who is the main character, or one of the main characters in the episode.
In science, we learn about the percentages of water usage. Ninety-seven percent of water on Earth is saline water, which humans cannot drink, which leaves 30% of water which is actually drinkable. Sixty-eight percent of this water is actually in glaciers, which is inaccessible to humans. Thirty percent of this water is in, is underground, where humans have a hard time reaching. And there's, that leaves 3%, 0.3% of water that humans have barely to drink. Eighty-seven percent in lakes, 11% in swamps, 80% in rivers. People in South Sudan who got clean water can have cholera, hepatitis E, and other waterborne diseases.
After reading Thirst and A Long Walk to Water, we decided that we had to do something about those suffering from the water crisis. Then, the entire fifth grade came together to discuss this issue. We discovered that 59% of people in South Sudan lack access to clean water. And to survive, families may be forced, families in South Sudan may be forced to drink dirty contaminated water, putting them at risk of waterborne diseases, which remain the leading cause of death among children in South Sudan. That's when we created Project Droplet. Playing some of the project. So as a fifth grade, we all met on the social steps, and we, and the fifth grade teachers asked us a very important question. What, as fifth grade students, can we do to help the water crisis? So we started many ideas. We could invite people to Johnson, we could send water to South Sudan. Good ideas, but that needed three things: time, effort, and money. And as fifth grade students, we only had one of those things. But we lacked two ideas. We could sell water and start a fundraiser. That could work. We would sell paper water droplets to raise money that then would go into a fundraiser. So during the week of fundraising, we had posters, flyers, commercials, and letters to companies such as Big B Coffee, so that they could possibly make a donation. Then the whole fifth grade split up into small groups, and we worked on those things. Next, we hung up the posters around the school, sent the flyers or letters home so that families could give the letters to companies, and played the commercials on the announcements. We also, in the morning, had a table set up in the front of our school with a teacher and some of the grade students, and they collected the donations. And a water droplet was $1, a bucket was $5, and a barrel was $10. The money that will be donated will go to a charity called H2O for Life. Also, the H2O for Life program ties in the Salva nuts fundraiser water for South Sudan. Then, the money will be sent to a town in South Sudan so they can build a well. The pictures on the screen are the kids who benefit from this. Contributions. As you might know, we read books, Thirst and A Long Walk to Water, where we learned about the water crisis. After reading, we knew we needed to do something. After coming up with the idea and pricing buckets for $10, barrels for $5, and water droplets for $1, we might be thinking only the fifth grade helped contribute money. That wasn't the case. We decided to get the whole school involved. Every grade, even kindergarten ers, helped us raise money. Every morning, we would set a stand where people could check out some of our creations. With everyone helping out, we raised a total of $1,581.10. All of this money helped us give the village in South Sudan a well, so they can have safe, drinkable water. That was our presentation about the water crisis. Do you have any questions?
Wow. That is really cool. You know what I think is really cool? That you read a book, probably in language arts, and then you talked about this in science, and then you maybe even were talking about it in other classes and doing all this stuff, so that you were, you were learning, and then you were actually doing and helping others. So I just think that's really cool. Questions for these...
Did any of you have any idea how little amount of drinking water we actually have access to?
Yeah.
And how, despite that, how good we've got it here as opposed to other areas of the world? Did anybody know that prior to this?
I did.
You did?
There's always one.
In science, we did an experiment, and we kind of had like a representation. And so there was a big, I forget what...
Cylinder?
Yeah, it was a big cylinder, and so that was all of the ocean water. And then at the very end, when we reduced all of the water, there was a drop in someone's hand, and that was actually the water that we can drink.
Yeah, so much water, water, water.
You, you did an awesome job. I mean, I, your presentation was great. And you know how, listening to these people sometimes, they don't really seem into it? You were into it. Like, I can tell, every single one of you knew this, had studied this. You did a great job. Targeted for them people.
Thank you.
So what was your favorite part of the entire presentation?
Selling the actual water droplets buckets and barrels.
So we have an entrepreneur.
I thought that the window is pretty cool. There were more people, but we ran out of the barrels and the buckets and water droplets, so I thought it was cool how many people got here.
That's a good problem.
I was a part of one of the groups that would make commercials for it on the announcements, and the group I was working with was very fun to work with.
Okay, entertainer, commercial?
Yeah, I wish you would have done some commercial for that.
Also, also, it was a great feeling to feel the accomplishment of doing all of this. It was amazing to do. I loved the journey.
And you guys got, as you said in the presentation, those are the students, a lot of kids your age, in South Sudan that you're, you're helping. Pretty cool.
Fifty hundred dollars.
So Mr. Fidel asked if you learned something about the water. You guys taught me something today. There are several facts in there and several pieces of information that really illustrated an important cause and demonstrated a lot of learning. This has been a really great evening. Frankly, I'm inspired by, by an athlete with an inspirational story, by a fantastic teacher, who was highlighted by students who are bringing a lot of things together, by a community member who recognized excellence. You guys were, did a really great presentation. Really proud of it. I want to get one picture, and then I ask you to turn around, let your parents get one too.
And we have a T-shirt too.
Yeah, everybody's...
Yeah.
And turn around, let your parents get a good picture of you.
I was gonna send that to Grandma and the aunties. Look over me. Oh, yeah. Good job.
And also, they're awesome teachers.
Yes, yes. Where, yeah, Ms. Hert, Ms. Cawthon. Community service.
We have T-shirts, very nice.
Hannah's apparently already been a...
Yeah, I sent you before.
Double the T-shirt. Yeah. Hannah wants some T-shirts. Thank you guys so much.
Good job.
Awesome.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. I know our board is, I didn't notice that one. I know, they just marched right in. You know, they're like...
Yeah, they just...
I know.
He makes jokes as an elevator.
I mean, that gives you tickets, like, master. I know. All right, we will continue on with the rest of the meeting on Speaker Street. Next up, we'll have our community forum, and it looks like we have a couple of speakers. So before we, we hear from those individuals, I would just like to share our opening statement about community forum. The community forum portion of the meeting of the Board of Education is an opportunity for members of the community to formally address the board about a variety of topics, including issues for future consideration. Since the topics raised may not be issues listed and advertised on the public agenda, the community forum is not intended to be a setting for dialogue with the board. Direct questions may be referred to the appropriate district personnel for future response. Answer briefly if the matter is procedure or tabled, as they may be a future agenda item. Speakers who have registered at the reception area are asked to identify themselves and state their reasons for addressing the board. Please address the Board of Education as a whole through the chairperson rather than individual members. And pursuant to state and federal laws, questions, or comments pertaining to an individual, student, employee, or community member cannot be discussed in open meetings. Since we only have two tonight, if you, there won't be a time, but we do ask that you please keep your comments brief, just for the sake of meeting. And first up, we will have Toby Marland.
I'm Toby Marland, father of two students at Highlands High School. And I've actually been sitting here, and what I wrote up in the paper is not actually what I want to talk to you guys about today. I do, but I don't at the same time. Last year, at one of the school board meetings, we had a parent who came and spoke out at length and repeatedly intentionally misgendered a transgender student at Highlands High School. I spoke about it last year. At least one of the board members after that expressed regret for not standing up for this student in the moment because of the, the impact, the recognized impact that misgendering a transgender student has. You know, this is an issue that it's really personal for me, not because it's in my family, but because my kids do have very close friends who are transgender. And I never thought that I'd have to necessarily wrestle with the issue of, how am I going to handle my kids requesting to have a sleepover with a kid who's transgender? And it's been eye-opening, and I've learned a lot, and it's really, what it's taught me is, at the heart of it, these are kids. And I've been really dismayed. Reading the news today, the Courier-Journal reported that one in five transgender kids has attempted suicide in the last year. Despite that, Senate Bill 150 advanced out of committee by an 11 to 1 vote. Despite one of the committee members losing a child, a transgender child, to suicide in the last few weeks, this bill is a very targeted attack on transgender youth in our schools. And I know, I've asked in the past, when there is legislation that is what I would consider harmful, I get that there's a variety of perspectives. But I've asked, you know, kind of how the board addresses these things, and if there's ever any sort of public advocacy on behalf of these students. I haven't really seen it. But Senate Bill 150 is one example this year of a bill that is, it's just horrendously targeted at an already vulnerable population among our students. There are various other bills advancing through the House that are similarly targeted at LGBTQ students. They are targeted at, you know, weaponizing the legislative system against teachers who may not act the way that some of these groups would like them to act. They are targeted at lowering the age for carrying concealed weapons and removing some of the restrictions for carrying concealed weapons in schools. So I, I would, I would love to hear some sort of response. And, you know, I, I saw online, I don't think it was brand new, but I saw a resolution passed by the City of Fort Mitchell, I think it was back before the election in November, due to the, I don't know all the details, but the ruling by the state, the city council, and the Board of Education, that every race is a partisan race. And the City of Fort Mitchell actually passed a resolution where they said, hey, we don't really like this, we'd love to kind of stay in control of our own stuff, and we don't want the state telling us that in our community where we value nonpartisan races, that we have to make them partisan, because it's going to lead to division, it's going to lead to, you know, fighting in our community, it's going to lead to more money being spent on things that aren't really advancing the goals that we want. And I, I would love to see this board and this town really advocate for the kids who are targets of these bills, that it's, these bills are going to lead to kids killing themselves. You know, these boards are going to put more on teachers and more of a threat of litigation against teachers that, you know, at the same time that the state House is holding meetings trying to address the teacher shortage, they're also saying, you know, we don't trust our teachers, we don't trust our counselors. And it's, it's amazing that they can't see the hypocrisy in the whole system. So, again, I understand that not everything is going to be public, and that some of it is behind the scenes, but I'm one community member asking this board to kind of stand up publicly and say, we don't agree with this sort of treatment of these students in our district. And like the City of Fort Mitchell, did we urge the people in this town to call your legislator and tell them not to pass this sort of hateful legislation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marland. And we have one other speaker, Jennifer Hengel. Did I get that correct?
we don't really like this. We'd love to kind of stay in control of our own stuff and we don't want the state telling us that in our community where we value nonpartisan races, that we have to make them partisan because it's going to lead to division. It's going to lead to, you know, fighting in our community. It's going to lead to more money being spent on things that aren't really advancing the goals that we want. And I, I would love to see this board and this town really advocate for the kids who are targets of these bills that it's, these bills are going to lead to kids killing themselves. You know, these boards are going to put more on teachers and more of a threat of litigation against teachers that, you know, at the same time that the state House is holding meetings trying to address the teacher shortage, they're also saying, you know, we don't trust our teachers. We don't trust our counselors. And it's, it's amazing that they can't see the hypocrisy in the whole system. So again, I understand that not everything is going to be public and that some of it is behind the scenes, but I'm one community member asking this board to kind of stand up publicly and say, we don't agree with this sort of treatment of these students in our district. And like the city of Fort Mitchell, did we urge the people in this town to call your legislator and tell them not to pass this sort of hateful legislation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marland. And we have one other speaker, Jennifer Heidel. Did I get that correct?
I know.
I know. Sorry about that.
Everybody does.
I, I have a last thing that, that happens too, so I apologize.
It's gonna be late. First hello to members of the board this evening. My name is Jennifer Heidel. I have three students in the district, a junior, a sophomore, and a second grader. My time tonight is sort of jumping on the bandwagon of everything that we've heard to this point. Tonight is celebrating our district and our teachers and the students in the district. So I just wanted to talk about a couple of the teachers that my children are learning from this year. First are two teachers from Highlands High School, Beth Brubaker and Emily Hapey. My daughter Audrey is in class with both of these teachers this year. And my son Grayor was in class with Ms. Hapey last year. These teachers make a strong effort to connect with their students in the class, but they also make an effort to connect with them as humans outside of the classroom. Both Mrs. Brubaker and Mrs. Hapey attended the Fort Thomas Holiday Market in December to support our daughter Audrey at her pottery sale booth. She's a budding ceramics artist and she was selling some of her wares when they came to support her and purchased a little piece. And she really appreciated that. Our son says Mrs. Hapey is one of his favorite teachers ever, and he looks forward to a hello from her in the holiday. And I just love that there's a personal connection that lasts beyond their time in the class together. Second, I would like to give a shout out to Katie Lepton. I didn't know it was gonna be her tonight. She is our youngest daughter, second grade teacher, this year at Johnson. And just like Mrs. Brubaker and Mrs. Hapey, Katie also goes above and beyond to support her students, both in the classroom and in their outside activities. But what I especially want to highlight, highlight tonight are Miss Lepton's thoughtful choices in her classroom. Our older daughter also had Miss Lepton in second grade, so we have been her fans for a long time. So when it was time for prayer at night last fall, I was like, ugh, we've been there, done that. I don't know that we need to go and sit through all the yada yada in the class, but I'm so glad I did because I got kind of choked up hearing Katie talk about how she has intentionally implemented systems for classroom management that lean heavily on celebrating kids' achievements and accomplishments and positive behavior rather than punitive systems. That I remember our younger kids, they, they had the stop sign, red, yellow, green clips. If you move the clip, if you make a bad choice in class, you go to the red. It just, it's more of a marker of choices that you'd rather not remember in class. And that is not what Katie is doing. She has chosen to celebrate and champion. Sorry, champion her students with points and prizes and touchdowns and trampoline bounces and fist bumps and the high fives and words of affirmation in every way imaginable to inspire them towards success. Katie, Katie is not the only teacher like this in Fort Thomas. We've heard about many others tonight. But she's the one cheering on my child right now, and I'm so thankful. This district is full of teachers like Beth and Emily and Katie. Kelly Booth was here tonight. She's also one of my kids' teachers this year. Mrs. DeKees, Mrs. Sheekey, Mrs. McKay at Johnson. And so I just want to say thank you to the board for publicly supporting teachers, for publicly supporting their efforts, for publicly supporting the students. Thank you.
Miss Lepton's coming in for the holiday board. Maybe trampoline bounce.
I mean, I would try a trampoline bounce.
I'm gonna talk to my boss about this. Miss Lepton, if you can share that.
Come see me anytime.
And that is, it's great to hear all of that, and that is true. And obviously what this board is about is the students and the staff and the teachers and this community and, you know, making it the best it can be for everybody. And we do have some challenges within our own state and our own country in terms of maybe things that, that might make that a more difficult decision moving forward. And we will continue to champion for them because they all deserve it. So, all right. We are moving into our action items, which means I get to read some more. And we are going to start with Mr. Wisman is gonna, Jerry's gonna tell some things, as he typically does at these board meetings, talking about award contract and a couple of BGs.
So a great hour of celebration that I'm gonna bring to a screeching halt by asking for millions of dollars.
Yeah, and the fun ends now.
To do good with though.
Yes, for the kids.
Absolutely. So the first one of our action items is related to the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract that we have been discussing for months. We gave you an extensive update and you received a very good overview of the, the contract terms from CMTA during the working board meeting last week. So now during regular meeting, we have to take the steps to actually approve that and initiate the next few steps in the process with Kentucky Department of Education that will vastly improve the current HVAC system at Highlands Middle School. Will make some key improvements to Highlands High School HVAC and will update lighting at Highlands High School, Highlands Middle School, and Woodville Elementary and other select small locations to LED. The key factors here is that we are going to get a lot of work done in a short period of time that's going to vastly improve conditions in those locations. And, and part is going to be funded by the money that we save through this contract. And there's a guarantee that CMTA is giving us that we will save that money or they will reimburse us the difference. Any questions or comments that you feel pertinent? And we want to go ahead and.
Talk about the BGs as well.
Well, we, we'll do that step by step. So we need to request approval of the contract with CMTA first.
Is that.
Are these three separate missions taking here?
Yes.
All right. So we will accept the contract, to approve the contract of the guaranteed energy savings with CMT, CMTA. So do I hear a motion?
I'll move to a vote.
Yes, that sounds right.
I was like, that sounded like I just did it all myself.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. So now let's hear about BG one.
BG one is the first document that is filed with the Kentucky Department of Education that kicks off an official project. It's where we send them information on who we're going to work with, how much the project is expected to cost, and how we're going to fund it. So the total. The total amount that we're going to request approval of the BG one for is for $5,530,000. That's the total amount of the project that will do everything we talked about with the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract throughout the district.
So, yes, all the things you mentioned, also guaranteeing the future savings as well. So kind of everything together that's been discussed.
Do you think in this new way of approving projects, you'll get a lot of questions on this with the Guaranteed Energy Savings Bond involved?
The way things have been going under our Lewis House Bill 568, they have simply been sending us a email back that says, we have received your document. Please make sure you follow the law in doing everything.
That's it.
That's it. There have really been no questions.
In addition to that, all of the procedures, all of the contract language, all of the specifications are really derived through documents produced by the Kentucky Department of Education. And our board attorney has actually reviewed the contract in its entirety. So a lot of the process that would have taken place from an approval standpoint has been expedited, but we feel very comfortable we're living within those parameters.
Sure.
All right. So having had all questions answered, do I hear a motion to approve the BG one in the amount of $5,530,000 for the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract project?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, BG two.
So a BG two is simply, it's very similar to a BG one. It, there's one for every location. So there's one for Highlands High School, one for Highlands Middle School, one for Woodville Elementary, one for the board office, one for every location where they're going to perform any type of work. And it basically explains to the Department of Education how much money is expected to be expended at that location, the work that is going to be done there. It's basically then doing a more detailed version of what's going to happen at each location. So there is one BG two for each of the listed locations.
Okay. So based on what Mr. Wisman shared with us, do I hear a motion to approve the BG twos for the Board of Education, 2504 Memorial Parkway, Highlands High School, The Fieldhouse, Highlands Middle School, Johnson Elementary School, Moyer Elementary School, and Woodville Elementary School?
Sure.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. And with that, I think for the moment.
The next step, the next item for action, Jerry, you've been hanging out here just a second, is regarding the resolution authorizing issuance of the energy conservation revenue bonds. And so this is, this is what the finance corporation approved in the meeting previous to this. This is how we pay for this project. One of the things I think is important from a communication standpoint for the general public is dollars that are spent on, on major projects such as this are typically from restricted dollars that can only be spent towards building renovations, new construction, and major repairs. And so that's, that's, you can only incur this type of debt in order to complete projects like that. So at this point, we just have to read the resolution and approve that.
All right. So that being said, I'm asking permission on resolution of the Board of Education, Fort Thomas Independent School District, approving a guaranteed energy savings contract with CMTA incorporated and approving the plan of financing the cost of said project, authorizing and approving the execution of a contract lease and option with Fort Thomas Independent School District Finance Corporation, and any further necessary insurance, authorizing and approving the execution of a supplement to the continuing disclosure procedures and the execution of tax compliance procedures. Do I hear a motion for that resolution?
I'm gonna go for it.
No, because when I was reading it, I was unsure they were actual words. So. Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, we swing back to Mr. Wisman.
Yeah.
Peggy, you got everything?
Yes, I'm just, we're just waiting on the system. I've got the little, there we go. Yeah. The little, the little mice in the leel has to run a little faster.
In conjunction with the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract, it would behoove us to replace the roof of Highlands Middle School. There's a lot of work that's going to be taking place on that roof with a switch out of key HVAC components. The roof is over 20 years old. We don't have any major issues with it yet, but our experience is once you get to that 20 to 23 year mark, you start to see signs of wear that will lead to those. And we are starting to see those signs of wear. So we want to be ahead of the game instead of waiting for every time arrange to have to put buckets around and garbage cans around and catch all the water coming in through the roof. So we've done these extensive work with Robert Emmett Hayes to design the roof. We've done BG one on that project, but now we need to do owner architect agreements, BG twos and BG threes on that project as well. So we have to officially award a contract for Robert Emmett Hayes. They have been performing this work without the contract because it typically authorized work when we get to a certain point. They know that they've done enough work with this.
So yes, we have to approve, and I'll have to have a motion on that. And so we'll go ahead and do that and then talk, then do the approval of the BGs. I need a motion for approval of the owner architect agreement with Robert Emmett Hayes and Associates for the Highlands Roof Replacement Project. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
And then, as indicated previously, BG twos are that more detailed document. A BG three is a also document prepared by the consultant, in this case, Robert Emmett Hayes, that takes an additional level of detail in terms of not just, you know, what the project is going to cost, but the materials being used. And then also includes submissions for the actual, you know, plans, which in the case of Highlands Middle School is just a one-page document because roof construction is relatively simple overall, especially roof replacement. So we are asking for approval of BG twos and BG threes for specifications and design development for that roof project.
All right. So you just heard the recommendation or the, the ask for the approval. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I should do approve.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Then one more.
Yeah, we, the last item in business that is connected to this is, you heard from, from Lincoln tonight, from RSA Advisors is, is part of our work with them. There's also a service agreement that they request that we enter into an agreement with them as well.
All right. So I think you heard the approval of the agreement with RSA Advisors LLC for the Highlands Roof Replacement Project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And I think that finally completes.
And we'll be back next month with the next steps in the process.
Same time, same channel. We'll see you tomorrow. All right. Our next item in the action agenda is staffing guidelines for 23, 24. Mr. Marland said he'll talk to us about those.
Yep. Attached to the agenda are the requested staffing guidelines for this year. This is the process that, that allows me to take the projected enrollments and send it to the site-based councils prior to March 1st. What their staffing allocations will be certified and classified, as well as their Section 6 budget for instructional purposes. They really represent a very similar, they're just a couple of minor changes to this recommendation this year. One is it clarifies some of the language related to the instructional assistance that we provide at the primary level so that if we, as a Board of Education, you all have allocated one instructional assistant for every three primary school teachers. And this language will clarify that when you get to Point 6, that that would be an additional instructional assistant. So we have a fourth section at a couple of the grade levels that would be an additional instructional assistant. It also clarifies the language around, we had a bookkeeper at Highlands High School in previous allocations and that, we have not been operating with a bookkeeper this year. And so that removes that from the staffing guidelines. It does not, it does not encompass Title I, preschool, or special education staffing. Those come through a later process.
So we need to approve new staffing guidelines?
If there are any questions, I might be there.
And entertain questions? And entertain questions. I think we feel pretty confident in the discussion that was had in working for the meeting explaining those changes. But obviously, if you have questions, please ask. Okay, hearing no questions, ask for a motion to approve the 23, 24 staffing guidelines.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to discussion items. Does anybody have board committee updates? Has anyone met the last month with their committees?
No meetings, but we have budget and salary committee meetings on the docket over the next month. So it's related to staffing guidelines we just talked about, you know, making sure that we are in a good spot. And but we put ourselves, I think, in a good spot to continue to make sure we're over allocating staffing. And I think the budget's in a good spot as well to make sure that we can put in future salary increases to make sure we continue to hire and generate features.
Right, like we said, it's great to hear all those wonderful things, and we like to report them when it is physically makes sense. I know that the ultimate plug to the Hall of Fame, I think they're still accepting nominations.
I think so.
I think so. I think through mid-March.
Yeah, I think mid-March.
And so please check out the athletic website, the Highlands Athletic Department website. There's more information, the forums there. So I know, maybe we'll have some of that to save the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that.
All right, sounds like that concludes the board committee updates, and that takes us to the approval of the consent agenda. So you can see everything listed there. I ask for a motion for the approval, having, since all board members have had the opportunity to review and peruse, pursue any questions about the items contained therein, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, do I get to say this? All right, call this meeting to an end at 7:42.